That's the National School Board of Trustees regular session on Tuesday, February 25th, 2020 in the Board Room in the Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas at 5:30 PM. Board members present, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mr. Fred Roberts, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Ms. Maricel Cahuana, and myself, Marshall Kendrick, board member absent, Vicki Morgan. As the record indicates, according to board members as present, that this meeting is due to call the notice this meeting was posted in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code 5.5, Chapter 5.51. In the case will begin with Mr. Jack Bailey and pledges by Mrs. Cahuana.
We finally just thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for this school district and, Lord, for all the great things it's doing in the lives of the families, the kids that go here. Lord, we just pray for the teachers, we pray for the staffs every day for their safety, and we pray for their efficiency and thank you so much for their commitment. Lord, we pray for the families of our community that you be with us and keep us all safe. God directs us tonight as we go through the meeting and just pray for wisdom and vision. Also, we ask in Christ's name, amen.
Please turn me on the pledge being written, flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We adjourn to total session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 5.5.074 for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, dissonance or dismissal of a public officer, employee, or hear complaints or charge against a public officer or employee concerning matters related to superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel and/or the superintendent's recommendation related to renewals, nonrenewals, and termination of contracts for professional personnel. 5.5.072 to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorneys did to the district on the code of professional responsibility, clarity conflicts with Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of its attorneys about pending or contemplating litigation or settlement offer and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 5.5.1.072 for the purpose of discussing purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will reconvene open session at 7:00 PM.
I'm here.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you all for being here tonight. And first thing on the agenda tonight is public hearing of annual performance report including the 2018-2019 Texas Academic Performance Report, TAPR. This is Donna Summers. Donna?
Thank you.
Good evening, school board members. Superintendent Powell, my name is Donna Summers and I'm the Director of Research and Evaluation in Pasadena ISD. One of my responsibilities is to distribute data that comes from the Texas Education Agency. Our purpose here this evening is to fulfill the public hearing requirement of Texas Education Code 39.362. This statute requires each district to hold a public hearing to discuss the prior year's annual performance report. By law, the report must include PDFs of the Texas academic progress reports distributed by the agency, the district's accreditation status, campus performance objectives, a violent or criminal act summary, and student performance in post-secondary institutions, as well as links to the 217-218 financial actual reports. In addition, the report must be posted on the district website within two weeks of this hearing and be widely available to the public. It will be found online under required postings in the next two weeks. Before we ask for comments or any questions from the board, we just had a few highlights we wanted to go over. First, in state accountability, the district's Domain II school progress score was a 90, and that translates to an A in state accountability. That means we did exceptionally well when compared to districts with a similar economically disadvantaged population as we have. Second, the district currently has 2,372 students enrolled in pre-kindergarten. This is up about five classrooms over last year's data. On the other end of the enrollment spectrum, there are 500 juniors currently enrolled in early college high school who we expect to graduate with an associate's degree in 2021. Also, in an effort to watch progress and monitor growth throughout the year, we have piloted what is called the MAP Growth Assessment in grades two through eight, and that will allow us to measure progress in reading and math two to three times a year, which is a little different than curriculum-based assessments or the STAR can do. So we're really looking forward to the opportunities that'll give us over the next few years. And that is our required public hearing. Do any of you have questions for me?
Anybody have questions? Thank you, Donna. Appreciate it very much.
Does the public get an opportunity to comment, Donna? So if the public has any comments at this time, would be your opportunity to share. You do such a fabulous job. Kurt, keep your hand down. Dr. Lewis, that's not funny. Thank you, Donna.
Next is public hearing on proposal of public or private partnerships for pre-K pursuant to Texas Education Code Section 29.153 from 2019-2020. Dr. Hickman.
See if it'll open.
So this is a new legislative requirement, as you know, board members, and we have, like Miss Summers just said, added numerous full-day classrooms for the pre-K students. In fact, all of our pre-K students, I know Dr. Hickman's going to say this in just a minute, that asked for full day received it, but we're still short two schools in getting full day across the board. So she's going to talk about that requirement regarding the waiver.
All right. So these are the House Bill III requirements for full-day kinder. Parts of House Bill III passed by the 86th Texas Legislature impacted how Texas public schools provide pre-K. One of the changes required school districts for the 1920 school year to provide full-day pre-K across the board unless a district requests and is granted a waiver from the state. The waiver requests are due March 2nd for this school year. So I know that we're already through the school year, but we still have to request the waiver for any half-days. Over the past five years, as you guys know, we have increased our half-day pre-Ks. I'm not doing the right button. There we go. We have increased our half-days each year so that now we're down to only two schools that don't have the full-day pre-K. And next year, we have the classroom space and the propensity to go ahead and do all pre-K classrooms by the law, and we'll have all full days. So that's been a great journey that we've been on, and we'll be at 100%. But because we still have these half-day classes, we're required to seek a waiver from TEA. And to apply for a waiver, the school district must solicit, consider, and present findings during a public meeting, proposals for partnerships with public and private preschools regarding offering full-day pre-kindergarten for eligible full-day students for the remainder of this 1920 school year. So we, in accordance to that, we did put up on our website last week a proposal opportunity for people to submit if they would like to finish our school year for anybody's in half-day, moving them to full-day. We did have one group turn in an application, and we did look through that, and it did not meet the required requirements of our application. This is a list of the things that were part of our application and the things that we were requiring and included implementation of the PAST curriculum aligned with the pre-K guidelines, 150 hours combined, hours of teacher professional development, and all certified teachers. All teachers had to be certified and had to meet the classroom standards of the regular public schools. So we looked at the proposals that were due by today at noon. We evaluated the one proposal, and at this time, we recommend that the board approve applying for the pre-K waiver for the 1920 school year because we didn't have any proposals that met the requirements. Any questions?
Any questions?
No, I think a statement, though. Although the state requires us to have full-day pre-kindergarten, they only pay for half-day kindergarten.
That is correct. The ADA is only for half-day. Total enrollment numbers?
We're right at 24, 36 is pretty close.
Thank you.
That's within five.
Any other questions?
Do we furnish, do the little ones ride the bus?
The only pre-K students that we have run the bus would be part of their IPs or the special education students, correct? So no, not at this time. It's not a requirement.
Little bit he got, sort of little standing on bus stop, I'd like to see.
Any public comments? This is your opportunity. Thank you, Dr. Lewis. All right.
And I do want to, we have our coordinator back there, Rebecca Terry, that has done a great job of expanding our pre-K along the years so that it hasn't been a huge effort this year because the effort's been made by you guys through the last years, and we have had a great couple of years of pre-K with our full day. So thank you, Rebecca, and thank you to you guys.
Thank you.
It's amazing what, it's amazing what these little pre-kindergartners learn in the time that they're in school. It is amazing.
We were keeping it short, but we did have a two-minute video that I watched yesterday of them reading, and it was...
It is amazing.
Beautiful thing.
And the feedback that I've received from parents has been just incredible.
Send me the video and I'll put it in the newsletter.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. All right. All right. That's our public hearing.
No worries. Special recognition.
All right. Have another fun evening planned with special recognition tonight. I'm going to bring up Dr. Lewis at this time, so if y'all have questions for him, he'll be here for opportunity to ask. But he's the chairman of the McDonald's Texans Invitational, at least I hope he will be after tonight. He's done an outstanding job along with Andrea Nguyen, our new executive director of the Education Foundation, and Sherry Hutcherson, our Education Foundation president and volunteer chairperson for the steering committee. So they're all here tonight, and you're going to introduce others. All right, take it away.
Dr. Powell, Mr. Kendrick, and rest of you board members, it's a privilege being here as always, particularly when I can leave in a few minutes and go home. So it's always good to do that, since I'm here in no official capacity tonight. I am here on behalf of the McDonald's Texas Invitational Basketball Tournament that this district and the city support so well. What I wanted to do tonight is honor some people first for their outstanding contributions, and then we'll do what we want to do tonight and make the check presentation to you, to the Education Foundation for the money that we raised during the tournament. The hospitality folks provide meals and snacks and an inviting place to rest and have conversation for our coaches, our referees, and our many volunteers in the tournament. They do an incredible job. The Culinary Arts Kids in the district provide some great meals. Elementary schools, intermediate schools, middle schools, and others provide snacks for us during the week. Local restaurants provide additional food for us to share with our folks, and it's just a great environment for our tournament for those people to come to visit us. The visiting coaches who come to the tournament tell us every year in their post-tournament evaluation that the hospitality suite is one of their favorite things. They not only get to eat well, but they get to visit with each other, and they particularly enjoy learning and networking and having a good time in that way. So we wanted to recognize those folks tonight for some outstanding contributions to the quality of the tournament that we put on every year. And I'd like Andrea Lynn and Tanya Hager to come forward. They're going to help me present those certificates. And you too. Okay, thank you. And if I read your name, if you will come forward and to the middle of the room up here, and we'll give you that certificate. First is Harold Stevens at Rayburn. We have Sorana Taylor from South Houston. She did not make it. Lanieta Simmons of Doby. Cynthia Gutierrez, Pasadena High School. Rachel Trader and Casey Peterson at Beverly Hills. Jennifer Tores at Deer Park, I believe she was able to make it tonight. Jack and Kathy Bailey at the Phillips Fieldhouse. We have David and Colleen Terrell, Hannah McLeaney, and Lori Mellon at Memorial.
Appreciate it.
And at this time, I'd like to invite Dala Haygood to the front of the room place.
Thank you.
Each year, we also give a Volunteer of the Year Award, and it's named after Dala because of the years and years of service that she put into this tournament as a volunteer. And so we wanted to recognize a couple of people tonight from this hospitality group that seem to go above and beyond what we require or ask of people. And so our Volunteer of the Year Award this year goes to Lori Mellon and Colleen Terrell. These ladies are there almost 24/7 during the tournament, it seems like. They're there setting things up before the tournament starts. They're there from the crack of dawn until late at night, and we just sincerely appreciate the work that they do to make that a special place. Thank you so much. The next award we want to give real quickly is the Barry Harris Extra Effort Award. Barry Harris was an employee of the district at Doby High School. He was a man who made things happen for our tournament for years. Regardless of what task we assigned him, he went above and beyond to make sure that everything worked well with his responsibilities. Barry passed away two years ago. We honor him each year now with the Barry Harris Extra Effort Award, which goes to someone working on behalf of the tournament, takes time, and takes their work to a different level. The primary purpose of the tournament is to raise funds for the foundation and support the mini-grant program. It's not an easy task. You're asking businesses in good times and in bad times to donate anywhere from $750 to $10,000 to our title sponsors who give much, much more than that. People are willing, but somebody has to ask them. They expect the executive director to do that, they expect the chair of the steering committee to do that, but they don't always expect our volunteers to do that. Our recipient this year made personal visits, phone calls, and emails, and gave a nudge of the elbow to some folks to make sure that they gave again this year, twisted a few arms, and it made this a very highly successful year, and you'll see that in just a minute as we present the check. But it's my pleasure this year to award the Barry Harris Extra Effort Award to Marshall Kendrick.
Thank you. Most undeserved.
We'll find out how well deserved it was in just a second. This last year marked the 17th year of the McDonald's Texas Invitational Basketball Tournament, jointly hosted each year by the Pasadena ISD, the City of Pasadena, and the Pasadena Chamber of Commerce. The whole intent of the tournament is to provide funding for educational grants through the Pasadena ISD Education Foundation and our partners in Deer Park with their foundation. It also showcases our great people, this wonderful community and the business environment in the city of Pasadena in a big way, and I think it's accomplished both those goals really well. In the inaugural year of our tournament in 2003, the tournament donated $10,000 to the Pasadena ISD Education Foundation, with a lot of exponential growth over those early years. After our presentation tonight, the McDonald's Texas Invitational Basketball Tournament has raised over $2.1 million for the Pasadena ISD Education Foundation and another $429,000 for Deer Parks Foundation, for a total monetary gift from the McDonald's Texas Invitational of $2.5 million. That's amazing to me. I want to thank Maricel and Nelda Cahuana and the Houston-area McDonald's Restaurants for being our title sponsor and jump-starting our fundraising every year. I also want to thank more than 125 businesses and individuals in the area who sponsor the tournament each year. About 80% of our funding comes from these donors, with the rest coming from gate receipts and merchandise sales. Funding goes to the mini-grants for our teachers to provide innovative instruction to the students of Pasadena ISD and to Deer Park. The exciting thing about those mini-grants is that very few of them are short-lived investments. Almost every one of them purchase equipment or materials that are reused every year and impacting the lives of students after students for years and years to come, making that value of $2.5 million exponentially greater. The gifts, those mini-grants, touch hundreds and thousands of students each and every year, fulfilling the mission of this district in a big way. So a special thanks to us from the tournament, to the City of Pasadena and Pasadena Chamber of Commerce, to our donors, to 350 volunteers who make this thing happen every year, about 50%, a little more than 50% of whom are district employees, who take time during the week, on the weekend when they could be going on their vacation for Thanksgiving, to help us. I want to thank the Pasadena ISD Athletic Department, the high school coaches and athletic directors for their help, the Pasadena ISD Education Foundation Board Directors, the tournament steering committee, and there are several of them here, and I'm going to ask you to come forward for the check presentation, so y'all start making your way up here if you would. And special thanks to Pasadena ISD Superintendent Dr. Powell and to the Board of Trustees for your constant and continuous support. So it is my distinct privilege as chair of the steering committee of the McDonald's Texas Invitational Basketball Tournament to present to Andrea Nguyen, the executive director of our foundation, if you'll come forward, a check for $158,767. I would like to have Sherry Hutcherson, the president of the Pasadena ISD Education Foundation, Dr. Powell, if you'll come forward as well, Marshall Kendrick as president of the board, and Maricel, if you'd come down also representing McDonald's, we'd like to have you in this presentation. I just want to let you know that this amount is the highest amount we've given to the foundation since 2013, and in 2013, we had folded in also the golf tournament that the foundation does into the total that we gave the district at that time. If we put the golf tournament on top of this this year, it would be the highest we've ever given to the foundation in the history of the tournament. So very, very excited for what we've been able to do, and very appreciative of all the people that made it happen. I don't really have to. See, that's the prerogative of being here. Thank you again, and thank all of you for all you do for the kids each and every day. We're just glad to contribute in this way once a year, so thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you so much, Linda.
I'll pick up dead birds.
Kurt, appreciate it. I'll go tell them to text me Teddy Gible Warner's name.
Good to see you.
We're going to ask you questions.
No questions.
How far back can we go back?
How far back?
Can we go back to ask you questions? I still have some unanswered questions.
Well, that is very exciting. We have other honors to go over tonight. In fact, we have some students that are just amazing that we're going to talk about for just a few minutes. We're here tonight to honor six of our high school students and their teachers for competing with students across the state to become a member of the prestigious 2019-2020 Texas Music Educators Association All-State Band, All-State Orchestra, and All-State Choir. I'm going to turn it over to Linda Fletcher, who we all know and love, our director of fine arts, who will say a few words, that'll be hard to believe, few words. I love you, love you, about the importance of the fine arts program, and then she'll introduce our amazing talented students and their amazing talented directors. And of course, she put a saying in here, "If I want to talk about the importance of fine arts," but I think you know our board members, and your superintendent, understand the importance of fine arts. We have the best directors in the state of Texas, and we have some amazingly talented students. We heard that tonight with our orchestra playing for us in the lobby and so many other opportunities from all the way up. So we thank you for your leadership and what you do here, and the amazing talent of our students and success in the classroom and, of course, in their field. I'm blessed to work with wonderful teachers. I want to thank you, Superintendent Dr. Powell, President, Mr. Kendrick, and school board members for allowing me this opportunity to introduce these wonderful students and recognize them, their families, their directors, and the administrators. And I want to share with you, 13 years our district has been voted as best communities for music education. TMEA, this was an exciting year at TMEA. This was our 100th year celebration for TMEA, Texas Music Educators, and they made some fabulous videos. Normally, I say a few words, but I think this little short video will say it, oops, will say it all. I'm hoping it will, if I can get back to it. Please work. There we go.
So one of the great things about music is it really touches everybody. We hear it on the radio, we go to concerts, we go to clubs, and we see things that really impact our soul. My name is David Orland, and I'm director of engineering at Amazon Web Services. In high school, I was a musician. I was a three-time All-State musician. I jumped into that and really enjoyed it. It just matched with something of who I am deep inside. I practiced a huge amount and became first chair. It was a sense accomplishment. It was the first time I really saw work relating to a result that really changed the way that I thought of myself going forward. The word grit really shows what we get out of music education. Grit is the perseverance of being able to overcome obstacles and challenges that line a path to accomplishment. Really, it's about falling down and getting back up. I believe that my music education set a solid foundation for my future, actually more than my engineering degree. My engineering degree taught me mechanics, but music education taught me work ethic, taught me time management, taught me grit, taught me leadership, and teamwork. And those are invaluable and someplace that music education can only provide. I didn't tell a group of 700 people later in my career. That was not a lot different than leading 150 people in a marching band field. Really allowed me to have a leg up when I began managing very large organizations. Really allowed me to have a leg up when I began managing very large organizations. I absolutely would not be where I am today without my music education.
As it says, it starts with music. TMEA also shared at every concert, All-State Concert Statistics, and the SAT comparison scores, the national SAT average was 1059, the state SAT average was 1022, and the All-State composite of all 15 groups was 1299, which of course is, 1299 is 240 points above the national and 277 points above the Texas average. These six students competed, it's an amazing accomplishment, there were like 67,000 students in all the groups that participated in Texas, and now only 2% were able to make the All-State Choir. It's an honor, and it's, and the audition process starts with district, region, and state. And the students we recognize tonight have achieved the highest level at the, that can at the high school level. I would like to present tonight our All-State students and recognize later their parents, families, directors, and administrators. Ms. Patricia Medina from Dobie High School. A junior TMEA All-State V-0ist from J. Frank Dobie is involved in many musical activities, including being a member of the Virtual Sea of Houston Youth Orchestra and a member of the Dobie High School Chamber Orchestra. She also plays at her community church and has participated in music festivals such as AFA. Other interests that she is passionate about is taking care of animals in need and expresses her visual art through drawing and painting. She aspires to be a performance major and music educator in the future. Mr. Andrew Garcia. Andrew is a current senior at J. Frank Dobie High School and is now a member of the 2020 All-State Timber bass choir. He has been singing since fifth grade and has been familiar with the region process since intermediate school. He's taken voice lessons for two years in aid to his progress as a serious vocalist. And Andrew is a member of the Dobie Varsity Choir Chamber Choir and the JFD Singers and is choir officer. In addition to being an accomplished high school vocalist, his piano skills have allowed him to be in other ensembles on campus, such as the Dobie Wind Ensemble, Jazz Band, and Marching Band. He has also participated in the new Steel Drum Ensemble and has past musical theater experience. Andrew plans on attending the University of North Texas or University of Texas after attending San Jacinto Community College and majoring in music. Madeline Blizzard. Madeline is a junior All-State choir student at Pasadena Memorial High School. She is a member of the Varsity Choir bowling team and hosts the program. After high school, Madeline would like to attend Stephen F. Austin University, while she will pursue a degree in nursing. Kylie Phillips. Kylie is a senior at Pasadena Memorial High School. She enjoys participating in many fine arts activities like Varsity Choir, First Edition Show Choir, the school musical, and she is also a Maverick Choir President. After high school, she plans to attend Sam Houston State University to major in music Nick Russell. Nicholas Russell is a senior at TMEA All-stater from Pasadena Memorial High School. He is a member of the Maverick Wind Symphony, who has been playing French horn for seven years. He has been working hard for many hours over the previous months to achieve the goal of making All-State. Nick enjoys playing the French horn and spending time with his friends. He is also involved with Pasadena Memorial Engineering Program and hopes to study aerospace engineering at Texas A&amp;M University while participating in the school's band. Colton Demant. Colton, Colt is a bass, excuse me, brass, not bass, brass lieutenant in the Mighty Maverick Marching Band and is a current two-year All-stater. He made it last year and this year. He has been raised around music since he was born due to his coming from a musical family. He loves music and one day dreams of being a band director, or trumpet professor at a college. Let's go with band director. While at the same time, I mean band director, while at the same time playing gigs on the side, in preparation for this, he participates in his Maverick musicals at his school, the 2225 Big Band, the Deer Park Community Band, his father's rock funk jazz cover band named Fifth Avenue, and of course, the Wind Symphony in full orchestra at Memorial High School. And right now, I would like to ask all of the family, friends, directors, campus administrators of these amazing students to please stand, because without your support and your help, they would not be where they are. And we are blessed to be a part of a district that appreciates fine arts and knows the importance to these students and to our community. And I appreciate the Board, I appreciate our Superintendent and all administrators in the schools that do share their love of the arts. I would again like to acknowledge these amazing students, these young men and women, and their musical talents. So please, may we acknowledge them. Do you want to go out?
Okay, we'll do a quick picture.
Okay.
Well, Board members, as you know, we have awesome students like you just witnessed, and we have awesome teachers. And so tonight, I'm going to introduce Chester Curran, if he'll come forward, our Junior Vice Commander for VFW Post 4395. And he's going to make a very special presentation to one of our teachers at Keller Middle School, who was awarded a Significant Citizenship Education Teacher of the Year Award. So thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you. First of all, it's an honor for us to be here tonight. We're representing Post 4395 and both Vietnam vets, 173rd Airborne, 100th Airborne. It's an honor to be here to recognize this teacher. You know, I've got to know her a little bit over the time since before Christmas, because she won the Post Award, and we presented it on the 20th of December before school break. And then we got a notification that she won District. And after District, we got a notification she won State. And we got a notification she's now at Nationals. And we haven't gotten the finals from that yet, but I got a feeling, I just personally feel like, I seen the information that went in on her, I think she's got a very good chance of winning the Nationals. So Ms. Lamb, would you please come up? Jennifer Lamb and the principal, Dan, would you please come up? I've got to take my hand off. This young man right here, this principal, I was talking with the mayor of Pasadena, and I belong to the Green Bayou District, and he asked me to come over, because he was giving him an award, and he said, "Why don't you get involved in Pasadena?" I came out to Pasadena, I went to 19 schools. I gave out information about the Patriotic Pen, the Voice of Democracy, which by the way, patriotic pens for junior high school kids. Only one response from junior high school kids right here at his school. 121 nominations came in, of which 21 went to District, and so they all won prize. So on 20th of December, we were over at his school giving out 21 awards to his students. So I thank him for that. And maybe next year, when other schools see what's going on, and maybe you haven't heard about the Patriotic Pen, but it's an every year an award where a kid can win up to $5,000. And the Voice of Democracy as a high school is $20,000. And the Voice of Democracy this year came from a Clear Lake student, because we didn't get any from any high schools around here. And I say this because I hope you take it back, and y'all be aware of this, that's a lot of money for a kid going to high school. And I was in Channelview, I retired from the Channelview area, I started a program over there called LOTC when I was there in '96, and I retired in 2005. But we had one kid that go all the way to Nationals, and one National won a $20,000. It's quite a thing. So today, Ms. Lamb, we'd like to present this award, and this is from the District, because she was out of town, that they were going to present that to her, and I told them to send it over to us, we'll take care of it, and we'll make sure she gets in a proper setting. The Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States Citizenship Education Award presented to Jennifer Lamb in recognition of excellence, and I have to put my glasses on, I'm airborne, but I can't see no more. Okay, citizenship, education, and patriotic principles of the Veterans of Foreign Wars. Thank you so much. We all appreciate what you've done. Principal, if you'd please go by and hand that to her. We certainly appreciate it. And thank y'all so much for your time with us tonight.
Congratulations, Susan.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your participation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good job. She knows how to do it. Thank you. Yes, sir. Service, sir.
Thank you so much.
You think so?
I don't know.
I see you down there. Troy, you up there now? I did. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. So Board members, that's not all the great things we have going on, but that's all we have time for tonight.
It's been a pretty good night, I would say, and congratulations to all. The benefactor is PISD and our students and teachers, so I think it's wonderful. We'll get on with the business of the district. Consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? On fave or say aye?
Aye.
Pose no. Motion passes.
Consideration possible approval of administrative personnel.
Mr. President, I move to approve the administrative personnel for tonight's meeting. Second.
Second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments? Go ahead, please.
One minute, we didn't vote.
On fave or say aye?
Aye.
Pose no. Motion passes.
Is Ms. Raina Merritt, congratulations to you. Let's give her a round of applause. Ms. Merritt is the new Assistant Director of Student Management Services. Do you have any family with you this evening? No? Right next to you.
Our family.
She is a current employee, so she is not new, so congratulations to you, and we look forward to all that you have to continue to bring to our district. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Education Section. Consideration possible approval of the 2020-2021 Pasadena ISD instructional calendar and designated professional development days.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
Question, is the staff development now based on minutes, like student and...
Actually, you've got to have the required minutes, so they only let you go up to 2100 for the waiver. That's correct.
Any other questions? On fave or say aye?
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a resolution to the Texas Association of School Boards for the nomination of Dr. Dean Powell as Superintendent of the Year.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, and second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
Question, is the staff development now based on minutes, like student and...
Actually, you've got to have the required minutes, so they only let you go up to 2100 for the waiver. That's correct.
Any other questions? On fave or say aye?
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a resolution to the Texas Association of School Boards for the nomination of Dr. Dean Powell as Superintendent of the Year.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, and second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
Question, is the staff development now based on minutes, like student and...
Actually, you've got to have the required minutes, so they only let you go up to 2100 for the waiver. That's correct.
Any other questions? On fave or say aye?
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a resolution to the Texas Association of School Boards for the nomination of Dr. Dean Powell as Superintendent of the Year.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, and second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
It's very kind.
Comments? We're very proud of you, and we're, oh, you're going to win.
Thank you. You better.
Did we say on fave or say aye?
No.
On fave or say aye?
Aye.
Pose no. If you pose no, we're going to ask you to leave. Motion passes. Consideration possible approval of the Pasadena ISD Extended Year Program for Summer 2020.
So move. Second.
There's revision for this, if I can find it. It was, I think, in the Board Book is 2021, so it's, revision is 2020, so we're in good shape there, thanks to Susan. You have a motion?
I did.
Did you, Vicki? Second. Melvin? Any comments or questions? On fave or say aye?
Aye.
Pose no. Motion passes. Consideration possible approval of District Improvement Plan for the 2019-2020 School Year.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? On fave or say aye?
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the School Affiliation Agreement between Pasadena ISD and HCA Houston Healthcare Southeast.
So move.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Fernandes, excuse me. Any comments or question?
Yes, how many students?
Well, we have different students rotating through for the various campuses, so how many would you say that HCA is able to accommodate? You have a number? Tony, you want to come to the microphone?
Good evening, Board. We have about 2,100 students in the Health Science Pathways across the district at all six high schools, and approximately 800 of them rotate through HCA. They are a huge supporter of our Health Science students, great partner.
Now, I knew last time we had had discussion that we were at capacity. Did we were able to solve that issue? Are we still there?
We're still at capacity, still looking for additional partners at this time. We have added one this year, so we're excited to add the medical resort, but we're definitely still looking for partners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is this just at the main campus, or since we have the extended campus open in the, at the emergency side on Fairmont, are they rotating out there?
No, ma'am, they're just at the main campus right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? On fave or say aye?
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval to apply for an exemption from full-day pre-kendig order requirements pursuant to Texas Education Code Section 292153 for the 2019-2020 School Year.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? On fave or say aye?
Aye.
No. Motion passes. Consideration possible approval of Laird Two Ethernet Switches for Wireless AP Growth E-Rate CSP number 20P, excuse me, number 2OP-028DG to Laird Three Communications LLC.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or question? Would somebody explain this?
I think you're out.
And you may want to stay put, you got a few agenda items, so you may want to stay close.
So the switches are necessary because we're going to add additional wireless access points primarily at the elementary campuses. Because when we did this about two years ago, we did it at middle school through high school, like that. And now we're going back to increase the number of access points at the elementary schools.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Arthur, you might have asked that, I actually said...
And this is going to save us money because?
It doesn't, well, it saves us money because E-Rate will pay up to, in this case, about 85% of the cost of adding those additional, those additional switches.
Okay.
On fave or say aye?
Aye.
Pose no. Motion passes. Consideration possible approval of 10G...
And now we're going back to increase the number of access points at the elementary schools.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Arthur. You might have lost it, I actually said.
And this is going to save us money because?
It doesn't, well, it saves us money because E-rate will pay up to, in this case, about 85% of the cost of adding those additional, those additional switches.
Okay.
Like that.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of 10GB transport service to Internet port service E-rate CSP number 2OP dash 025 DG to PhoneScope Enterprise Group.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan.
So to get to the Internet, you have to have, you have to have a connection to go there. And we renew this annually and we get E-rate support of 85 to 90% of that cost of us having connection out to the Internet. The government will pay for that. So we pay 15% and they pay the 85%.
What kind of cost is that, Arthur? Do you know?
Yeah, it's about $1,200 a month and the, so we'll pay 15% of that $1,200 a month.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're doing me.
Got a question over here.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have this in all of our schools?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, this is, this particular item is just for, all of our schools are kind of connected inside the district. We own that, you know, we own that fiber. And this is the connection from, you know, our main data center out to the Internet.
Thank you.
Any other question? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of LINT or dark fiber wide area network to data center solution E-rate CSP number 2OP dash 026 DG to Zale Corp.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan.
Okay, so, so one of the things we did where the, we used to have an external data center was in Katy. And that really wasn't very friendly for us to get back and forth out to Katy when we'd send somebody out there. It almost takes them a whole day to get back and forth out there. So we moved, we were relocating that data center down to the Southwest Freeway and 610 and SARS 1, which is a, you know, like a level four data center. We also will move the data center that still houses here into that off-site data center. So when we, you know, when we relocate from this building, we won't put a data center in the next administration building.
Okay. Any questions?
You won't put a data center in the building because you're going to the cloud?
Yes. That essentially will be in the cloud because SARS will represent the cloud for us.
So why would we be spending this money then?
Why would we?
Why would you go in the cloud now?
Well, we are, we, well, right now, the problem we have right now is we've got maybe half our information out in Katy, half our resources out in Katy, and we have half of them in the back room over here.
Right.
So we want to consolidate that and put it all in a more secure data center like that.
So even though we'll be in the cloud, we'll still have the secure data center?
Yes, we'll still have a secure data center.
Just at one place rather than two?
Because you need both.
No, we don't, we don't really need both. The...
Or it just takes time?
It just takes time. When, when, when they originally opened, you know, got the contract out in Katy, the intent was to get it all moved out there. But as, you know, as things happen, we, we didn't get it done, so we kept working on it to, you know, to move and get it done. This, this will provide us with the most security because, as you know, in this building, we've talked about the state, the state of this building and it's back there where it floods and everything like that. So this will be a much more secure location for us. And then we don't have to build, for instance, a level three or level four data center like some districts have done.
Any other questions?
So it's beneficial for us to have this off-site then?
Yes, ma'am.
For all kinds of reasons.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
How often are we traveling out to these sites, to the site?
Well, we don't, we don't want to travel out there, you know, often. If, what the site does, essentially the site houses the equipment for us, okay? They don't run the equipment. We still run the equipment. But it's, it's basically the same as the equipment that's here. And my folks are located down near Beltway 8. If something happens in the rim back here, somebody comes out and checks it, well, the same thing happens. So it's not something that's a daily occurrence, but it might be a couple of times a month. But the biggest, the biggest reason here and why the district went to an off-site data center was really to get more secure data center that allows us when, when they have a...
Hurricane.
Yeah. You know, when you have hurricane, anything like that, then we don't, the, the system doesn't go down. So we're not without email for four or five days or something like that.
So one day, the power went out and our trans generator blew. So Troy and I were in there with the police and technology people trying to fan it the old-fashioned way. Because we were going to lose everything and it was the beginning of the school year where data is constantly being put into the system and being utilized. And if we go down, everybody goes down. So it was quite comical, but it was very serious.
Fantastic. Any other questions? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval for wireless access point with associated structure cabling E-rate CSP number 20P dash 027 DG to NetSeq Network Solutions.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Sullivan, second by Mr. Hernandez. Fernandez, not Hernandez, Fernandez.
So this is actually related to item number eight. Item number eight was the, was the switches and what, what switches are to, for every one of these access points that we put up, a lot of them are in the ceiling, you don't see them, okay? But for everyone that we put up, well, we have to, we have to connect it back to a switch and that switch controls it like that. And so, say, for instance, for every 48 access points we have, we have to have a switch. So, so you have to have both pieces. You have to have the switches to control the access points, then you have the access points actually get deployed in the areas where you want to, you want to have the coverage for students or anyone else using wireless devices.
There will be a test after, after all of this explanation.
We're going to leave her. Thank you, Arthur.
Arthur, thank you so much for doing all of this to make sure that we get this E-rate. That's going to make a lot of difference in the cost factor.
Yeah, it does. It's a, it's, it's a huge savings as far as, you know, the network and trying to keep the network running and the costs associated with the network, which is quite a bit.
Yes, it is.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible approval of 2020-2021 Environmental Defense Fund EDF grant award in the amount of $2,600 and the approval of the corresponding EDF grant agreement.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Hernandez. Gee, I'm trying to rename you today. Any comments or questions? This isn't agreement?
We have a revised.
Yes. Anybody can address the unrevised portion? Are they agreement? I knew she would.
I think there was just a, was it a small change?
Yes. There were just small changes because we were trying to keep it consistent with the other contract we have with them for passing the memorial. And so we, we just had to change a little bit of language and so they quickly made the changes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for all the hard work that Troy put into it.
Absolutely. Keep getting these grants.
She's good in her group. Any comments or the comments, questions? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible approval of the Justice Grant Resolution for the 2020-2021 school year.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Kehan. Any comments or questions? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval for Thompson to travel to Keystone, Colorado to attend the Keystone Science School October 10th through 16th, 2020.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. How many years is this?
This will be 29.
29.
Oh, wow.
It's always a great trip. Thank you.
Send pictures.
It's probably a trip that a lot of our students would not be able to make if it were not offered through the school district. So it is. Thank you for continuing it.
They always send us nice letters.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible approval of the J. Frank Dobie High School Speech Debate Qualifying Team members to travel to three national championships events, the TOC Tournament of Champions in Kentucky, NCFL National Catholic for Senics League Grand Champion, and NSDA National Speech and Debate Association Championship.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, question, where's the Tournament of Champions in Kentucky held at?
It's actually not held at Western Kentucky. It's at the University of Kentucky in Lexington, Kentucky. But there is someone's name up there as the national champion, if you noticed that in paragraph two. And the night talk this year will be hosted at Dobie, so you'll be hearing more about that. It's a big tournament. We bringing kids from all over the nation, so.
Right.
And Dobie is nationally ranked, which is a huge honor for not only Dobie, but the district as well.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of J. Frank Dobie High School AFJROTC orientation, or excuse me, oriente, how you say that?
Orienting.
Orienting team members to travel to Woodbury Island, Washington State, April 17th through the 20th, 2020, to participate in the 2020 Orienting USA Junior National Championship.
So move. Second.
Morgan, Mrs. Morgan. Motion, Mrs. Sullivan, second. What is this?
It's our JROTC, so yay. Yes, come on up to the microphone. Yes, sir.
What's orienting?
Finding your way.
Good evening, board. I'm William Malpass. Orienting is a high-speed navigating sport using a very detailed topographical map. It's similar to the military activity of land navigation.
Wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
And you are going to bring back the number one spot. Sounds good. All right. I like your attitude.
I can use some help.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Possible approval, consideration possible approval for students and faculty from passing the high school to travel to and from Washington DC and New York City for educational experimental reasons during spring break 2021.
So move.
Question.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Question by Mr. Roberts.
What? I wish Laura was still here because I've never seen experimental on here before. I'm trying to figure out what the experimental deal is.
Experential.
Experiential. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was looking at that and I went...
We don't want to do experimental things when we go on trips.
I ain't highlighting you.
And this is also not for this school year. This is for next spring break, actually, because they want to know that it's approved before they start doing any talking to parents or letting parents start to financially prepare for it. So they're getting really ahead of the game.
Is it like a close-up? Well, that's what I was going to ask. What, what group is this?
Um, I'm looking for you. All right, I know. Yes, Ms. Edwards, come to the microphone, please.
Okay. What was the question?
Tell us, is it like close-up or?
Yeah, so basically, we do spend two and a half days in DC where we see monuments. We take a tour of the Capitol, all that, which should be very interesting right now. And then Arlington National Cemetery, all the big monuments, and then we take the trip to New York City. And then there we do all the sites there, including a Broadway show. And all of it is really based, US history-based. So we tend to go with high school kids and then we're teamed up, because we're usually smaller groups. We're teamed up with eighth graders from other parts of the state. So they also are doing US history, just a different part of it. Last year, we're teamed up with a school from Nebraska.